Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Winslow Service Area School Town Hall meeting. It is May 10th, and we are so thankful that you have joined us this evening. We do have an agenda before you. We have our introduction of our agenda. We're going to have an opening prayer, and we will present the current Winslow Service Area data, Navajo Nation COVID data. We'll have some information in regards to updates about COVID vaccines and safety, and just to provide some in-depth current information. We also will have a presentation by Arizona Health Zone, a fun presentation, just to share with you and your families about family gardening. And then we will have closing remarks by Dr. Dorville. So, thank you. Let's go ahead and bow our heads and let's pray and give this time to God. Dear Lord, thank you for another day you've given us. Thank you, God, for all the many blessings and the help that you give us, the way you guide us, and how you are helping us as an organization to be there for our community, to help them and guide them. We thank you, God, for here with our schools and here with our students and all the parents and the staff. And we continue to look to you for help in this time. And I pray for continued protection. I pray and ask that you continue to heal our land. And I pray for our healthcare workers and every role that they play, God, in this organization and across the Navajo Nation, our state, and the United States and the world. I pray continue to help us to persevere and renew our strength when we get tired and weary. And I pray for continued wisdom for our school leadership. And thank you for all the things you've already done and are still doing. And we pray over this time tonight in Jesus' name I pray, amen. Okay, well, first, we're going to start off with our COVID data for Winslow Service Area. And we're going to give time over to Denise Blackrock, followed by Alicia Gishy.
Good evening, everybody. So, this is trending of COVID cases by community. So, the good news here is, as you can see, we are pretty much at a plateau for all of our service unit communities. We've had probably a couple cases a week since the plateau started, but they have been very few. So, as you can see, you know, there might be little raises here and there, but pretty much as far as the communities go, we're not seeing any, you know, outbreaks or anything like that in any particular community. And then this is our border town communities as well. So, as you can see, we've seen some leveling up there as well. You know, the couple cases here and there aren't going to show too much here. So, this just tells us as well that we haven't seen any outbreaks lately. Because normally, when we did see outbreaks in the communities, as you can see, it was these increases, as you see, back in like December, January, where it's gone up. But so far, like I said, the past few weeks, we've been pretty, pretty level here. We still have had some cases. I'm not saying we've had no cases. We're still seeing, like I said, a couple cases a week in all of our District 7 communities and District 5 communities as well. And some of these, some of our new cases, the interesting thing with some of our new cases is a few of them have been what we call reinfections, meaning people were positive for COVID back in like December, and then they recovered and they tested positive again. So, you know, we're still telling people to, you know, be vigilant and be careful because COVID, you know, people can catch COVID again if they get a different strain of it. But the good news is we are not seeing too many of those. So, those are still, you know, they're happening, but they're, 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 the numbers are very low on those. And then as far as the PHN case management, cases by age groups, our highest numbers have been 25 to 34-year-olds throughout the whole pandemic, followed by the, actually, these guys are tying now, the 15 to 24-year-olds and the 35 to 44-year-olds. And then as far as our pediatrics, which are 17 years and younger, we've had a total of 533 pediatric cases. And our highest numbers have been in our 15 to 17-year-olds, all of but a 12 to 14-year-olds. And this has been pretty consistent throughout our, since the pandemic started. And this is our trending of overall cases. So, as you can see, like I said, we're still getting a couple cases here and there, but pretty much we're happy to see that, you know, our numbers have gone down and we're definitely on the downside of the curve, our Epi-curve here. And that is all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Denise. Now, we'll have Alicia Gishy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am going to share the Winslow Indian Healthcare Center sit report. And this is updated through Sunday, May 9th, 11:59 PM. Total number of tests performed is 24,134. Total number of negative tests is 20,591. And total number of positive tests is 2,865. And again, this is a friendly reminder, just as a number of tests, number of tests. And our 14-day positivity rate is 3.6%. So, went up a little bit. Total vaccines administered is 13,063. And COVID testing hours here on-site at Winslow is 9:30 Monday through Friday. And our COVID vaccination hours is 9:30 Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And our drive-through pharmacy still continues Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 4:00. And a friendly reminder, beginning May 28th, that would be our last day of drive-through pharmacy. Thereafter, it will be inside MOB clinic. And our next community COVID vaccination clinic is Tuesday, May 11th, at Indian Wells from 11:00 to 12:00 Mountain Standard Time. And our next school COVID vaccination clinic is Wednesday, May 19th, at Holbrook High School, 9:00 to 1:00 PM, Mountain Standard Time. Thank you.
Okay, and now, we're going to go ahead and have some data shared regarding Navajo Nation COVID data. And Alicia Gishy will go ahead and share that information as well. Thank you, Alicia.
Hi, yes, hi, everyone, again. Thank you, Sasha. So, here is the Navajo Nation COVID-19 dashboard, and it's updated through May 19th, 2021, in a sit report number 435. And total confirmed cases, 30,620. And number of new cases is 11. And total confirmed deaths, 1,285. And number of new deaths reported, zero. And here are the service area confirmed cases by service unit in Border Town. And here is Border Town's the highest, 8,537, with Winslow being the lowest, 1,977. And here we have the daily confirmed Navajo Nation graph. And then kind of similar to what Denise had, had on her slide. So, again, May 9th, 2021, we had daily count of 11. And COVID by age group is here. We do have some under 10s. And it's pretty much even all the way down as far as gender, male and female. And the highest age range is 30 to 39 for having COVID positive by age groups. And our next looks like a tie between 20 and 29 and 50 and 59. And our COVID, or I'm sorry, Border Town COVID-19 by age groups, highest age range is 20 to 39, the tie there. And next highest is 10 to 19. Oh, I'm sorry, next highest is 40 to 49, and coming in third is 10 to 19. And here you see total count of cases since March. And it's kind of a great summary to what Denise had had. And the blue one here is Border Town. And this is an interactive site. If you go to NDWH COVID-19 data dashboard, it's interactive. So, each line that you click on, it'll give you the daily count of each case. And the orange line here, we have Chin Lee with 5,583. And here we have Shiprock with 5,160. We have the green here with Gallup, 4,856. And orange, Tubus City, 3,726. And the, like a teal color, 45, 3,636. And the red is Crown Point with 2,940. The mustard-colored, Kanta, 2,719. And the brown is US, 1,979. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Alicia. And you can find that information on the Navajo Nation Department of Health website. It's updated. And then also, our data is updated on the Winslow Indian Healthcare Center website as well, if you'd like to look at it again. And we're just so thankful for all the reports that we get from different individuals. And Alicia is a part, she's our liaison for our incident command system. And then also is very much a part of our, the health, health meetings, command center meetings that takes place. So, she stays updated with that information. We also like to include information from our surrounding counties. Navajo County is not available today, but we do have a representative from Coconino County, and we'll go ahead and have him present his information. Jacob, would you please go ahead? Thank you for joining us, Jacob.
This is Jacob Perdaki. I'm an epidemiologist with Coconino County Health and Human Services, and I can give you a quick rundown of our COVID numbers. So, I'm going to present to you the data that we've, that's been completed as of May 1st, 2020. So, these are the most recent figures we have. So, for the, this is week 17. And for this week, as of this date, we had 17,575 positive COVID-19 cases reported in Coconino County, 309 deaths, 1,259 hospitalizations. And that's for the total outbreak. And then for the week, we had 87 cases with a rate of 61.5 cases per 100,000 and a positivity yield of 5.3%. And then, looking at our community transmission metrics, this put us in a moderate level of community transmission with 61.5 cases per 100,000 positivity yield of 5.3%. And a COVID-like illness of 0.8%. Then, looking at the Epi-curve, for the past few weeks, we've seen a nice decline in our number of cases. So, these green bars are the cases by week for 2021. And these blue bars are comparing the number of cases for the respective week in the year 2020. So, this time last year, we had a higher number of cases. This is when COVID really started to take off in the area. But then, this year, we're seeing a decrease, which is good. Then, looking at our schools, our school districts, as a county, we're in the area of substantial transmission. So, we have a, our cases since is 60, 1.5 for 100,000. Yeah, and then our positivity is actually lower than that. But anyways, so if you look at our school districts, most of them are in the substantial. A few are lower moderate, and then Maine Consolidated is in the high. And if you look at the number of cases per week, we've seen a nice drop amongst pretty much all of our communities within Flagstaff and then other areas within the county as well. The only exception really is Williams Unified School District saw a slight increase in the number of cases, as well as I believe that's Maine Consolidated saw and one extra case last week. And then, looking at our, our metrics within our schools. So, for Dornum, Oxon, Tubus City Unified and Williams Unified have experienced two consecutive weeks below 100 cases per 100,000 population. And then, Coconino County Combination, Flagstaff Charter, Flagstaff Unified, Fredona, Oxon, Page Unified, Tubus City Unified, and Williams Unified have experienced a two-week positivity yield of 10% or below. And then, looking at the age breakdown of our cases, in recent weeks, the majority of our cases have been in the 18 to 24-year-old age group, followed by, by the 25 to 44-year-old age group and the under 18 age group as well. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you happen to have any questions, those of you who are viewing this Town Hall meeting, at any point, you may put your questions in the chat box, and we will keep track of that to see if we can answer your questions at any time. It's very great to hear the updates of lower numbers and declines. And we're wanting to see that, and we've been praying for that for a long time. And I'm going to talk to you a bit about the COVID vaccination because right now, there's some, some information that a lot of people are still trying to, you know, weigh their options and make decisions about getting the COVID vaccination or not. And so, we just want to provide you some information to help you in any questions you might have. So, I'm going to go ahead and share this. So, COVID vaccination update, here's a presentation. So, we're going to talk a little bit about, just briefly, about how, what, what is, what is a vaccine and how does it work? Because there are a lot of vaccines that we do receive from the time where babies, even after, even within the first day of a baby being born, they receive the first hepatitis B vaccine. And then, you know, there's various other vaccines for measles, mumps, vella, tetanus, and on, you know, chickenpox. And there's now a shingles vaccine. So, vaccines prevent diseases that can be dangerous or even deadly. They work with your body's natural defenses to protect you from a disease. And they also help your immune system to produce antibodies. And just like if you were exposed to disease, your body would know how to fight it. And so, what we're trying to do is vaccinate for protection from the disease without having to get the disease first. So, vaccines in a sense are like a powerful medication, which it prevents these, these diseases. So, I'm going to give you some examples of some common vaccines that we've received. You look here, the first box shows a number of reported polio. Polio went, was very, had very high rate of cases back in the 1980s in our world and even America's. And so, we see that when the vaccine was implemented, you see that decline of the number of cases. And another slide shows chickenpox. We might remember as a child, you might have had chickenpox, right? And everybody experienced it, maybe worse than some and some mild. But they came up with a vaccine back in 1995, and you see a decline in the number of chickenpox, also called varicella. So, there's been a vaccine for that as well. Kind of gives you an example of vaccinations and what, what can happen when we get vaccination. So, we'll talk a little bit about the COVID-19 vaccine. COVID-19 vaccinations help us to get, keep us, keep you from getting sick from COVID. And they, they're, the COVID-19 vaccines are available in the U.S. Have, and they've been shown to be very effective. Wearing masks and social distancing help lower your chance of getting the virus or spreading it to others, but these measures are not enough. The combination of getting vaccinated and following CDC recommendations to protect yourself, and others will offer the best protection. The more people who get vaccinated, the faster we can get back to our normal lives. These are the COVID vaccines that are available. There's three. They have received what's called an emergency use authorization from the Food and Drug Administration. And they are from the companies of Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson. And all three were approved to be safe and highly effective against serious illness, hospitalizations, and death. The Pfizer and Moderna vaccine require two doses, given at least three to four weeks apart. And people should get both doses to be fully vaccinated in order for it to be effective. Johnson &amp; Johnson is only one dose. At Winslow Indian Healthcare Center, we are offering Pfizer and Moderna. So, a lot of questions about safety. And really, those questions is what keeps a lot of people from getting the vaccine is their question of safety. And so, there are five different steps that vaccines have to go through for it to be approved. And number one, small groups of people receive the trial vaccine. Number two, the vaccine is given to specific groups of people by age, race, and physical health. Number three, the vaccine is given tens of thousands of people and tested for effectiveness and safety. Number four, the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices looks at the data to see if the vaccine is safe and works. And they give advice to the U.S. Food and Drug Administration. Then, step number five, the FDA looks at the data and the advice from the advisory committee and decides whether to approve the vaccine. The vaccine's only approved after all these steps are done and various teams of reviewers are sure that it works and is safe. So, a lot of you might have questions regarding the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. The pause of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was an example of safety monitoring and action. On April 13th, the FDA and CDC paused the use of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine because six people out of 7 million developed a rare blood clot soon after getting the vaccine. And scientists do study, they studied the data about these blood clots, who was likely to develop them and what might have caused them. On April 23rd, the FDA and CDC decided it was safe to start using the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine again and that its very large benefits outweigh its very small risk. FDA and CDC will continue to take side effect reports seriously and investigate severe reports. So, with the development of the vaccine, a lot of questions surround, how is it safe if it happened so fast? If it was developed so quickly? And so, we want you to know that they already had helpful information about coronaviruses. So, they weren't starting from scratch. And also, a lot of people participated in clinical trials, and they didn't have to spend a lot of time finding volunteers. Also, the U.S. and other governments invested a lot of money to support vaccine companies with their work. And so, a lot of countries worked together. The whole world worked together for this. Manufacturing happened at the same time as safety studies. So, vaccines were ready to be distributed once they were approved. So, I'm going to show you a picture of a timeline so you can see that. So, example of COVID-19 vaccine timeline is there. And you see that the testing was taking place at the same time as manufacturing and development because it's a, it was, it's a pandemic. And they had to think fast, work fast, do things as quick as possible to gain control of this. And so, traditionally, with the traditional timeline of COVID, of vaccination development, they follow each step, one by one. But with this COVID-19 vaccine, they did things more quickly. There's questions of, can I get COVID-19 from the COVID-19 vaccine? No, the vaccines do not contain the live virus that causes COVID-19. This means that you can't catch COVID-19 from the vaccine. Do the COVID-19 vaccines have any side effects? Serious side effects from vaccines, including this particular one, are rare. It is possible that some people may have side effects, which are normal signs that your body is building protection. And it's just like any other vaccination. I know that when my children are small, getting their vaccinations, they would develop soreness and also little fever. So, same thing with this. These side effects may affect your ability to do daily activities, but they should go away in a few days. A lot of reports of what we had, myself as a nurse here, of a lot of people who had the more intense side effects may have felt them for one to two days, and then they were fine. Most common are tiredness, headache, pain at the injection site, muscle or joint pain, chills, nausea, or feet, or vomiting, and fever. A lot of people wonder about allergies, if they should get the COVID-19 vaccine. And so, anyway, we do screen people for any history of anaphylaxis reactions to vaccines. And we do let them know of the ingredients that these vaccines have in them. This vaccine does not have eggs, gelatin, preservatives, or latex, which with the other vaccinations, that's what would, that's what would cause us to not give a certain vaccine to, to people because of allergies to eggs, gelatin, preservatives, or latex. So, Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson do have lists of their ingredients that you can view and find out if, determine if it would be safe for you to receive. If you have a history of a severe allergic reaction to something else that's not in the vaccine, like peanut butter, discuss with your healthcare provider before receiving the vaccine. Another question about whether or not this is safe for those who want to have a baby one day. Yes, people who are trying to become pregnant now or who plan to try in the future may receive the COVID-19 vaccine when it becomes available. Based on what we know right now, experts believe that the COVID-19 vaccines are safe for someone who's trying to have a baby. And there is no evidence that fertility problems are a side effect in any vaccines. Should someone who is pregnant or breastfeeding get a COVID-19 vaccine? Getting vaccinated is a personal choice for people who are pregnant or breastfeeding. And they should discuss this with their healthcare provider. And the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists recommends that COVID-19 vaccines be offered to pregnant and breastfeeding individuals when they are eligible. Right now, we don't have data about whether the COVID-19 vaccines are safe in people who are pregnant or breastfeeding. We do know that getting sick with COVID-19 during pregnancy can increase the risk of severe illness and might increase the risk of outcomes like preterm birth. Are the COVID-19 vaccines safe for children? The Pfizer vaccine, as of today, is authorized for people ages 12 years old and older. And Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson are authorized for people ages 18 and older. Younger children, less than 12 years old, are not able to receive the vaccine at this time. Some people ask if... Some people ask if uh, the COVID nineteen vaccine is gonna change their DNA. No, COVID nineteen vaccines do not change or interact with your DNA in any way. They teach our immune system how to fight against a specific virus. In order to do its job, the COVID nineteen vaccine doesn't need to go inside the nucleus of the cell, which is where our DNA is kept. This means the vaccine never interacts with our DNA in any way and has no way to change it. So giving, gonna give you some information of who's received the vaccination so far. About seventy percent of patients coming into Winslow Indian Healthcare Center for appointments are vaccinated overall. Fourteen thousand four hundred and forty doses have been administered. Seven thousand four hundred and fifty-seven people have been fully vaccinated from our uh, Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. And uh, six hundred and seventy-four partially vaccinated, meaning they're waiting to get their second dose. Out of all of the, out of those numbers, teen patients who have been vaccinated by age sixteen-year-olds. There was a hundred, there has been a hundred and twenty-three, seventeen-year-olds, one hundred and seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, one hundred and twenty-three. At this time, our overall positivity rate is three point six, like was reported by Lisha. I'm gonna show you a graph here. Um, Denise shared a similar image of the number of cases. And here we wanna show you the point in time where we began to give the COVID nineteen vaccinations. And how that's reflecting, um, the effectiveness is reflecting on how our, our wave went down, number cases have gone down. And so I just wanted to show that to you so that you can see that we believe that the vaccinations are helping, helping with this uh, spread of the COVID nineteen and helping to control this number of cases. So specifically, because this is the school town hall meeting and it's our focus group, um, where we were thinking of the state, the safety of our children. And um, to date, um, as was shared earlier, we've had two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five positive COVID cases overall. And five hundred and thirty-three were children, the youngest child was one month old. And of course, all the way to eighteen years old. And within the past two weeks, we've had twelve positive cases. Three cases were kids under sixteen. And out of the twelve, ten of the twelve were not vaccinated. And out of the, the two that were, one was partially vaccinated, meaning they only received their first dose. The other was fully vaccinated and both are recovering well. So here's some information about getting a COVID vaccine at Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. I, there are, there is non-emergency transportation available to come to Winslow Indian Healthcare Center to receive your COVID nineteen vaccine. And here's the phone number to call, two eight nine six two eight one for assistance and scheduling that. COVID vaccination clinics are currently drive-through at the end of May. There, the vaccination clinics will be held in the main uh, medical office building. And also, you may request for the COVID vaccine at your regular doctor visits. Here's the fly, the current flyer for the vaccine, reflecting the, the new information for twelve years old and older. And the uh, parents, you may begin to make appointments for your children starting tomorrow. And parental consent is, is um, required. What should I do if I experience symptoms after receiving a COVID nineteen vaccine? If you have a lot of pain or dis- discomfort, talk with your healthcare provider. Uh, lately, we've been telling people they may take Tylenol. And um, also, when there are any adverse side effects, uh, it can be reported on V-safe, uh, which is a um, a- after vaccination health checker if you're interested in um, documenting that. How long after getting the COVID nineteen vaccine does it take to be effective? Which is um, one of the common questions and how long does it last? It usually takes a few weeks for the body to build immunity after the vaccination. This means that it's possible a person could be infected with the virus that causes COVID nineteen just before or just after they were vaccinated and get, and get sick. This because, this is because the vaccine has not had enough time to provide protection. So we've been telling people that two weeks, fourteen days after their second dose, they will have built up that immunity that's been reported for Pfizer and Moderna, which is up to ninety-five percent um, protection. We do not know yet how long the COVID nineteen vaccine will provide protection. Experts continue to conduct more studies about whether the vaccines are, also keep people from spreading COVID nineteen. That's still something we're, we're looking at and trying to find out. Do I need to keep wearing a mask if I am fully vaccinated, meaning you receive both doses? Yes, until more people are vaccinated, some prevention measures will continue to be necessary even for people who have been fully vaccinated. Continue to wear your mask, avoid close contact with others in public. You may visit other people who are fully vaccinated, but take precautions when visiting people who have not been vaccinated. Stay home and get tested if you feel sick, isolate if you test positive for COVID nineteen. So important, everybody's gotta do their part, especially uh, with wanting to stay in person in school, for those of you who are in person, wanting to get back to in-person, for those of you who are not back in person. Yet we all got to do our part and work together. Who can help me make a decision about getting the vaccine? So if you have more questions, talk to your healthcare provider, uh, a doctor, a nurse, a pharmacist, somebody that um, can give you some information, more in-depth information, maybe specific to your health, your um, health condition, and um, they can help you with that. So that is, that is the end of that presentation. And if you have any questions, you can put that in the comment section on the Facebook Live. But this is the presentation that our school health task force uh, has come up with to communicate with you. Um, some help, some information to help you with your decision. And we encourage you, we're encouraging you to think about it and consider getting vaccinated if you haven't already. And also consider getting your children vaccinated if they are able to and with that age group. So please post your questions if you have any. And um, before we end the town hall, we're gonna spend a few minutes um, hearing a fun presentation from our Arizona Health Zone. And again, like I said, post any questions and before we end the town hall, we will work on answering those for you, okay? But let me give this time over to Arizona Health Zone, um, Margine Bodden and Sterling Henkak. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Margine Bodden and I am the Community Outreach Manager for the University of Arizona Apache and Navajo County Cooperative Extension Programs. Um, and for those of you who don't know us, we operate the Snap Ed Program. And one of the main things that we do, especially right now, is we provide support to home, school, um, and community gardens. And I'm gonna let Sterling talk specifically about, because we're right at the time to get started with home gardens. So Sterling, take it away.
Okay, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for the wonderful presentations and the information. Uh, Margine and I are very happy to be here and participating. Um, give me a second, I will s- uh, share my screen so that we can uh, see a couple of slides. I just wanted, uh, just kind of, um, you know, break the ice here with what I'm going to talk about. I took some slides from a curriculum that we have been teaching virtually. It was made um, to be in person, of course, but it's called Seed to Supper. And it's a beginner's guide to uh, home gardening. And it, it, it talks about being on a budget and planning. And so you're going to see a small example of some of the different uh, programs, curriculums, and, and workshops that the Arizona Health Zone, the University of Arizona can provide to your communities. So, your job as a gardener is to give plants what they need. And you can see on this, this uh, this illustration here, they need, um, it's very basic. But if they miss just one of these elements, uh, they will, your plants will not do well in your garden. So your plants need air, they need the sunlight, they need water, obviously, and then they need the nutrients. And if you are able to give the um, the right amount of each of these, you know, elements to a, a plant, they will grow, they will thrive, and they will, will provide you with a lot of healthy, um, good tasting produce at the end of the growing season. Um, this illustration actually was taken from the Seed to Supper manual. Um, if we uh, worked with the Oregon's, uh, Oregon State University, they developed Seed to Supper first. We then took it and worked with them and adapted it to Arizona, which you, you will see in our next slide, that we have a lot of different um, issues when we, when it comes to gardening in a very hostile con- climate of northeastern Arizona. So we live up, and you can see on the slide right here, we live in the, the tillish, the grayish-green um, area of the state. So we are in the higher elevations. Um, you can see Window Rock is a little bit higher than St. John's, uh, higher than Winslow. So we are dealing, especially with the Navajo Nation, a huge uh, difference in climate zones. We have the mountains up by Luca Tukai, and then we have uh, the, you know, the, the lower hotter areas like around Winslow, that we are trying to grow um, plants to sustain our families and, and have a healthier lifestyle. So this is something else that we will talk about and we can go into more detail when we have our workshops for the communities of the Navajo Nation and all of Apache Navajo uh, counties. Um, creating a planting plan, this is a very, very important part. It's actually one of the first things that we talk about. It no matter if we're doing Seed to Supper or a workshop at a community garden like there in Winslow or at a community garden, any other com- uh, St. John's or Concho, you have to know what you are going to uh, uh, plant. You don't wanna plant something that's not, that you don't like, if you hate. Uh, for example, in the picture, if you hate beets, don't plant beets. Uh, plant something you're going to enjoy cooking, eating, your family likes. If they really like salsa, a good thing to start off is, is with growing some chilies and peppers because they grow well here in our part of uh, Arizona. But also, you got to remember that gardening does cost. There's water, there's labor, there's the actual buying of the seeds or starts plants. So you want to be smart. Remember this, we, we've liked to teach and we want to promote gardening on a budget because we know that a lot of our, our clients, a lot of the community members that we work with, they are limited on um, you know, what they can buy and what they can put into uh, their garden. And then it comes down to the space limits. There are lots of people that are only in apartments. And so, you know, teaching them to use containers, buckets, and different ways to grow just a few vegetables can greatly uh, improve the lifestyle and the healthy, the healthiness of a family and, and just a few steps. So that's why the Arizona Health Zone and the University of Arizona is, we're so excited and we really like to promote gardening in whatever way, in whatever manner the person is able to at their, at their home. So, um, you know, a few things that we talk about in our gardening workshops are, what is realistic? If you're wanting to grow a avocado tree in Winslow, it's not going to do well. Unless it's inside and you baby it, because it will die in the winter. So you got to think, yes, I love avocados, but it's not realistic for me to grow an avocado tree up in northeastern Arizona. So you wanna look at your climate. Um, this example from the Seed to Supper uh, manual says, you look at page seventeen, the common uh, crop chart. Uh, let's just do one that, because we have corn right at the bottom of the slide. So, um, this chart will tell you, okay, you're growing sweet corn. The footprint, or how far you need to place each plant away from each other, is twelve inches by twelve inches. The planting method is in rows. The height of the plant of the sweet corn is tall. Days to harvest, depending on the variety, is seventy to a hundred and ten. Can it handle shade? Corn likes full sun. And do you do single or two weeks succession planting? That means, do you plant everything at once, or do you plant half, for example, half of it? And then, and not wait two weeks and plant another? And those are some of the topics that we go into detail. What is succession planting? Um, what plants can handle shade, what plants can't handle shade and need the sun? We go over in detail and we can go through with the, with the community members in their meetings and their workshops. And we can answer very specific questions to that community. And that's what I really like about all of the different gardening programs the Arizona Health Zone has, um, working with the University of Arizona. To give, um, you know, very, very adapted and individual workshops to what is needed because every community has a different climate, every community wants different things. And so we are here to help you with that and, and work together and, you know, and, and get some gardening going, get some community gardens growing um, up in our area around, you know, St. John's, Hope, or Winslow, and air, anywhere in Navajo and Apache Counties. Grow the vegetables you enjoy, you know, make a list. Do, your kids like salsa, like for example, okay, we're growing Roma tomatoes and we're growing jalapenos because we wanna make spicy salsa. Or maybe someone really likes carrots, like you have a child that really likes carrots. And then you get to, you know, talk with your family and, and, and make that plan together. It is scientifically proven that children are more likely to at least try a new vegetable if they helped grow it. So this is a good way to get your family active and uh, get out in nature, breathe some fresh air, be around a green, you know, a, a so, you know, a green environment and get some, that, that work, because gardening is hard work. And then get the fruits of your labor at the end and have some really good produce and healthy uh, meal options. Another thing that we will kind of talk about is when we buy our plants in the beginning, they're really, really small. Like for example, the, on the left there, that picture of someone planting tomato plant, look how tiny that plant is compared to on the right, where the mature tomato plants are growing. And I have the next, an illustration on the next slide that actually shows the footprint, oh, sorry, it's the next one after that. But it is the footprint of the tomato plant. And um, it shows just how big they can get, even though they look really small when we plant them. So, um, we talk about gardening, your planting, and where it has to have good airflow that helps to keep the fungi and the molds down, keeps, you know, keeps it a healthy ecosystem. You want it where it's convenient, because just like anything in life, if we don't really see it and if it's not reminded, we'll probably forget about it. So, just like it, it says, out of sight, out of mind. So, put your garden somewhere where you will see it, you'll be able to enjoy it. You'll be able to sit outside, have a, you know, some tea, coffee, or a drink or something and just enjoy the green environment of a garden that is producing not only an ambience of, you know, tranquility, but also a um, a food source for you and your family. So the next slide actually is showing in a different way how much uh, footprint a, a mature tomato plant takes. So we will, we go into detail and we can ask, answer questions about gardening um, with your community. Even right now, if you have questions, you can type them in the chat. I can't see them right now, but we will answer them as soon as we're done. But um, these are just some of the, the fun things, because gardening is so important right now. It's on everybody's mind. The, the pandemic showed the flaws, or the, I shouldn't even say flaws, there's weak, there are weaknesses of the food system and how things can be disrupted very, very simple, you know, quickly. And how we need to have a little bit of control, at least a little. I'd like to a lot of control over where our food comes from. Um, we talk about avoiding problem spots, you know, you don't wanna, where it's like this, where it flooded out, oh, because the dike broke. You don't want to be near creeks because of flooding. The wind, which we have to work with, windy areas are bad. And then in the more urban areas, you want to stay away from places that, like old buildings were tore down and had used lead paint on the walls. So there are, you know, there's just things that we will go through. I can answer questions. In fact, the next slide, which is my last slide, is our mine and Margine's com- contact information. Feel free to call us. Email is usually the best because I am in and out of the office for me personally. But you can email us or, or call the office or call us. We can answer questions, we can help set up workshops, working with community gardens and, and the, the general community and the members in whatever town or chapters that we're working in.
Thank you, Sterling. And I know that your program is working with a few of the schools in our service areas. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're working with Park in Holbrook, Hewitt and Holbrook. And we're expanding. So yes, we're working with schools, we work with Headstarts, we work with, you know, the community garden clubs. We, we work with the chapter houses up, you know, when we're up north. So yes, we work with a wide range from the very, very, very babies of Headstart to our elders that are in the, you know, in the senior centers up at the chapter houses too.
Okay, great, awesome. Well, thank you for that. And if there's any questions that are posted later, we will direct those to you. But here is the contact information for Arizona Health Zone. And we so appreciate their work and how we partner with them. And we are a healthcare organization working closely with youth ages and schools. And so we're always looking for resources that encourage healthy activities and gardening is one. And it's that time of the year, it's also an activity that keeps us outdoors, which is healthy for us, keeps us active. And also can encourage healthy eating habits because, you know, we can grow our own vegetables and it's a lot of fun. I know that for myself, when I had a garden last year with my kids, they were excited when we would pick a zucchini, you know, and we would cook it. And they were really excited to eat it, even though before that, when I bought it from the store, they didn't really like it, you know. So, so, you know, parents encourage, you know, I encourage you, try it out and start small and you can build upon it the next year, but just to encourage some healthy eating habits. That's why we had this fun presentation, you know, aside from all the other updates that we wanted to provide you, just to throw in there something for your family to, to listen to and to enjoy, get some ideas, okay? So we thank you again for, for listening and watching. And I'm gonna go ahead and give this time over to Dr. Dorval to give some closing remarks. And then we will conclude our, our meeting this evening. Dr. Dorval?
Hi, everyone. So I've been learning a lot about this gardening, about the data. So I want to thank all the presenters and all the information that we have been getting with the town halls, not only this one, but just some of the previous ones. But one of the things I wanted to remark today, when I was thinking about today's date, when I was seeing patients and just remember where we were a year ago and so much that has happened over the year. May tenth, twenty twenty. And when you think about what was going to happen later in May, June, the summer between lockdowns, wearing masks, other mitigation efforts that, as we were trying to navigate how to deal with the virus. You know, we come on the other side of things. But we have still one final hurdle to get through. And so as was presented with the data earlier today, that we can see a difference with the vaccine. I've been working here with Winslow Indian Healthcare Center for many years. I was one of the physicians working, especially at the hospital at the COVID ward. So we definitely seen back in March, our COVID numbers got smaller and smaller. So that was a relief or if someone was having COVID, it wasn't as extreme as previous times in the, especially around the holidays where we would have to ship people to Phoenix or other areas. You know, in hopes that they would get better at a higher level hospital. So the vaccines definitely do make a difference. And I'm thankful for the presentation that Sasha gave, going through some of the myths especially that people might have for vaccinations. So the more people get vaccinated, the more we're able to go back to somewhat normal one day. And so I just want to encourage people who have not been vaccinated, reach out to one of us if you have questions that we can try to go through, what your concerns are. If you're someone who has been vaccinated and if you know others who are not, tell them about your experiences with the vaccine. Because that will help as well. And so it's great news that we hear today that there is an emergency use order for us to start vaccinating age twelve and up. And that is just wonderful news and we're hoping that we can even go to lower ages eventually so that schools can get back to in-person. I have been seeing more teenagers over the last couple of weeks for their health exams. And a lot of teenagers are struggling with just complete online or not being able to see their friends. They're struggling academically. So there is a mental toll that has happened to our youth during this pandemic. So our goal is we know what works, the mask work, the social distancing. But we also know the vaccines have made a dramatic difference. Ninety, ninety days ago, I was taking care of a full COVID ward and giving unfortunate news to family. So it's amazing to see within a ninety to a hundred days what has changed. And so, but I also want you guys to remember, give yourselves a hand, give yourselves a pat on the back for going through what you have gone through over this past year because it has been a lot. So it's good to just reflect, you know, and thank God. And I know many have lost, you know, lost a lot. But I, I just believe we're at the final stretch. So I just want to recommend people, urge people to continue following the public health mitigation measures and to also vaccinate. And again, I'm sure Sasha will go through. If you have questions, myself, the other physicians and providers are happy to answer. The web, the website for the question or the email for the question is schoolhealth@wic.org. And the number to make an appointment for a vaccination is nine two eight two eight nine one nine three zero. But if you come to the clinic and want a vaccine, we will find you a vaccine. So, you know, just get here and we'll get you vaccinated. Also, I just want to say one other thing. If you think it'll be helpful to do another kind of presentation like this, just for the vaccines, let us know, give us feedback on, on how, you know, what you want. Because these forums are for you. And so please, you know, present your questions to Sasha or on the WIC website so that we can help give you the information.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Dorval, for those closing remarks. And we're very thankful to, that we are here for you to support the schools and the staff and students and parents. And our task force has been working closely with the schools in our area to help look forward to the next school year and even to those schools that are having summer school. And we're just being a resource and a support for your school. And we'll continue to do so, do the best we can to help. And we're very thankful that you have all joined us tonight and share. This, our video will be recorded, so you may share this with others, maybe your colleagues, your friends, neighbors. Let them know to view this as very good information for you all. So thank you. Have a good night. That will conclude our town hall meeting for today.